He's gonna sit in just behind me.
It's actually weird.
So, yes, is it looking like, you know, 3.5 percent go through this house?
I would use so to go to the S E S. Sadie, it's good to see you.
Good to see you, ma'am, again.
Yes.
Take it, good to see you, ma'am.
Good, good.
Okay, let's go this far.
Okay.
Oh, hold, Susan, let's take it, one, yeah.
Okay, now.
Now, let's take Susan.
Yeah, because it's there.
It is, yeah, yeah.
Did you get it?
You gotta update it.
He's a former son guy.
Well, well.
Yes.
Is it better? Shall we share? Shall we share?
How are things going?
Going well, going well. We're closely following what's going on in Austin with three years.
Yes, oh my gosh, you know.
So, yes, is it looking like, you know, 3.5 percent go through this house?
I would use so to go to the S E S. Had the car lots and everything, it's pretty tough because we realize that some city services are kind of hurting, you know. I don't know that.
Are we doing recess? We're doing recess, I can do that.
Yes. Congratulations. I remember when I was following the center. This is the outcome.
Well, that is great.
Yes, so I was really happy for you. Yes.
Yeah, great, great.
Yes, that was great, congratulations.
Let's do that.
Okay, one thing, so you make my life. Your tan go away.
You know what it is like to serve and say, it is an honor to do so, so we do what we have to do. Thank you. Yes. Tell one, I do too. And, um, no one wanted to mention it, nobody wanted to mention it today on my staff. I was pretty sure, right? Yeah, but I do so.
Okay, let's take one at a time, okay? Let's take Susan first. Oh, Kevin.
Yes, please.
Kevin, get in the front.
That's what he does the other day.
All right, one, that's good, Kevin. One, two, three.
Okay, Leslie. Okay, live.
One of these will turn out.
One, two, three.
I think we'll get one or two.
One, two, and three.
Do you have?
I think so.
That's coefficient, right?
Yeah.
Good, good.
Read about.
We've met down. Good to meet you, well.
We did. I'm glad to be here, thank y'all for asking me to come and, uh, you know, I also have a senior in high school, so graduation is.
Graduation's coming around. Which school?
Rallett.
Rallett?
So, I'm like.
Well, at least you didn't have to travel far, unless you drove up from Austin.
No, I stayed for y'all.
Awesome, thank you.
Stayed for y'all.
Larry Young, by the way, nice to meet you. Thank you for coming, appreciate it.
Yes, sir. Rachel, ready? Good evening. Let me welcome each one of you to the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for Monday, May 13th. I want to give a special invitation to our state representative, Rita Barvis. Thank you, ma'am, for being here and all of our guests. Would you please join me in invocation? Today's invocation will be given by David Mills. He's the lead pastor of Hope Church in Sunnyvale. Pastor.
Father, we thank you so much for your blessing. We ask your blessing now on this meeting tonight. We thank for our town council, uh, that you give them the wisdom and the knowledge that they need, that you place them in the position that they're in. And so, God, we just pray that you would give them wisdom as they make decisions tonight, and we thank you so much for them, for their service. And then may you get honor and glory from everything that's said and done today, and we'll thank you for it in Jesus' name.
Amen. Please join me standing for the project.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, unto the republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please be seated. Once again, good evening. Let me welcome you to the regular town council meeting of the Town of Sunnyvale for today, May 13, 2019, and this is our first meeting of the month of May. Again, I appreciate everyone of you for being here tonight. At this time, uh, let me call to order the town council meeting. The time is 7:06, and we have all council members present, and we have a call. The first item on the agenda is, first item is the public forum. If you are here, uh, at this time, you may come forward and talk to the council on any matters other than litigation or personal matters. If you are here, and if you'd like to address the council, please come forward at this time. No one is coming forward, that's why I'm going to close the public forum. We have a recognition, uh, this is the time to recognize Deputy Greenlee for his efforts in successfully organizing the first annual bike rodeo. Deputy Greenlee, can you come forward, sir? Thank you once again, Scott. So, I'm going to read, uh, something about Deputy Greenlee. Council and members of the community, I would like to take a moment to recognize Deputy Chuck Greenlee. Deputy Greenlee recently coordinated the donation of 26 bicycles to kids in the Riverstone Trail Trails community. Deputy Greenlee conducted the sheriff's department inmate program division and inquired about the bicycles that are repaired and donated out to the community as a part of the bicycle repair inmate programs, thanks to the Richardson Bike Mart and detention service officer, Arlo. The bicycles were waiting for the kids as they got home from school and exited their school bus. The children with the big smiles were able to get their bikes and ride away to enjoy them over the weekend and summer. Think about the joy. Deputy Greenlee also organized the first bike rodeo at Sunnyvale High School. In partnership with several organizations, town departments, and individual volunteers, the event offered bicycle inspections and important safety information to children and families. The hard work and dedication by Deputy Greenlee for both of these events is recognized and very much appreciated. Tomorrow will be Deputy Greenlee's last day serving as a traffic deputy in Sunnyvale. Beginning on Wednesday, Deputy Greenlee will move to serve in the sheriff's department property evidence division. We wish him a sincere thank you for serving the community and wish him the best. See if anything else you want to add?
But you have this point, right?
Yes, you did.
You're welcome.
I take pride in Deputy Greenlee. He came to me as a Phase One rookie many, many years ago, so he's actually one of mine. And it, it has been a privilege working alongside you. When I have a guy that I can turn to when I'm not there to get something done, it takes a big load off of me. And you're one of those guys that I could always depend on and count on, and I greatly appreciate it. Good luck, you got a year and a half, and you need to be coming back.
And there's a certificate of recognition I want to read. We hereby recognize Deputy Greenlee for outstanding achievement in successfully organizing the first annual bike rodeo. On the fourth day of May, year 2019, signed, Mayor Saaji George.
Can you put that in your book, too?
You want to say it? You don't have to.
Well, I will.
You can put second verse on the spot, right?
Uh, I'd just like to say that this is one of the things that I have a big passion for, and is the community policing and reaching out to the young kids in the neighborhoods. This is a really great way to do it, the bike patrol, along with the bike rodeo that I'm doing for the kids. I already have plans for next year's, and it's going to be bigger and better, and I already have people, other people that weren't involved this year wanting to be involved next year to make it even better, so I'm looking forward to next year.
Okay, moving on to the agenda items, discussion and action items. This is the town secretary portion of the agenda. Item number one, discuss and consider and act upon Resolution 19-15, a resolution of the town council of the Town of Sunnyvale, Texas, canvassing returns and declaring results of the special election held on May 4, 2019, for the purpose of electing one council member, place six, and voting on six propositions, I'm providing a severability clause. Rachel?
Mayor and council, the Texas election code requires that the town council canvass the election every year for the May 4, 2019, town council election. And this year, it is required to be done between May 7 and May 15, so we are meeting that requirement.
There's no action on this one, right? Or we need to vote on it?
No, there is a reaction, or there is an action, it's a resolution.
It's a resolution, okay.
Yes, sir.
So, make a motion? Okay. Can I have a motion, uh, to canvass the election results from May 4, 2019? Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve the resolution 19-15 as presented.
Second?
Second by Clark. Have you all heard the motion? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed 6-0. Now, this is the fun portion. Moving on to the oath of office, will be administered to Councilmember Finch, Councilmember Clark, Councilmember Freeman, and Mayor George by Representative Rita Barvis. Once again, ma'am, thank you for being, doing. So, because Finch is going to go first, or? Okay, Mr. Clark?
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Again, right?
Thank you, yes.
Okay. I'm going to give you baby, baby portion of it.
Okay.
To get as close to the mark as we can. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I.
Kevin Clark.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The duties of the office of.
The duties of the office of.
Councilmember Place Two for the Town of Sunnyvale.
Councilmember Place Two for the Town of Sunnyvale.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will do the best of my ability.
And will do the best of my ability.
Preserve.
Preserve.
Protect.
Protect.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution and laws.
Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Do we need to do signatures now?
Mr. Finch is next.
Councilmember?
Mr. Clark?
We didn't do, we can do it later? Okay, okay, so we can come back. Okay, next we have Councilmember Ryan Finch. Congratulations. And so, I, you repeat after me once we get through the first part.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I.
I, Ryan Finch.
Do solemnly swear, or affirm.
Do solemnly swear, affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of.
That I will faithfully execute the duties of.
The office of Councilmember Place One for the Town of Sunnyvale.
The office of Councilmember Place One for the Town of Sunnyvale.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Next is Mayor Saaji George. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I, Saaji George.
Saaji George.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of mayor for the Town of Sunnyvale.
Of the office of the mayor for the Town of Sunnyvale.
Of the State of Texas.
For the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
Will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
The Constitution and laws of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. Next, we have. Yes, please, your family, if you want your family to come up and join you. And congratulations to you. So glad to come full circle. Y'all come around so you can be seen. Because it takes a family, it really does. In the name and by the authority of the State of Texas, I, Jonathan Freeman.
Jonathan, I, Jonathan Freeman.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
Do solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
That I will faithfully execute the duties.
Of the office of Councilmember Place Six for the Town of Sunnyvale.
Of the office of, uh, Councilmember Place Six in the Town of Sunnyvale.
Of the State of Texas.
Of the State of Texas.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
Preserve, protect, and defend.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And of this state.
And of this state.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations, Mr. Freeman. So, council, with your permission, I'm going to take a 10-minute break so that families can catch up and take pictures as necessary.
Oh, absolutely, absolutely. So, you want to do your signature, this is yours. And I'll sign, too, so.
This is, this is mine, okay.
Mm-hmm. What, ask, ask.
Rachel.
Rachel, yes, because, because I don't know if I sign here or where. I think you sign here.
That's what I think.
You're here, uh-huh, and then she's here.
Okay, great, that's what we thought, we had it figured out, y'all got it. Thank you, sir. I don't want to do it in green.
Good, looking forward to working with you.
Yes, sir.
Oh, thank you.
It's green.
Looking forward to working with you as well. Absolutely, thanks, sir.
I think it'll be Susan's, but it's green, so I don't want to do it in green. Okay, Kevin. Here, you sign right here, and I'll sign right there. It's good to see you again.
Good to see you again. Last time we saw you was at the Capitol.
Well, I thought, did I see you at the dinner, at the foundation dinner here?
Yes, I did see you.
I love my daddy. I got to sit in my dad's chair when I become a third book. I love my daddy.
Thank you, yes, it's good to see how things been going, great? Great, busy, that's, that's all we have, and it is going fast in years, I, I, I don't think so. I think so.
I love my daddy.
I'm ready to know, because I have a senior that's graduating, and I.
I should, too, my grandson just graduated college, and I have one graduating high school, so how about you?
High school, and so you know what that's like.
Oh, yeah.
See, then you've got to get them moved, and so. Yeah, so I can kind of get my ducks in. No, we have to wait, you know. And then I think I have, uh, Councilmember Jonathan Freeman. He's still getting hugs, is he still getting hugs?
And his wife told him not to sign until she could take a picture.
Wait, Jonathan, before you do your duties, you got to. Yeah. So, right here.
Thank you, ma'am, I appreciate it.
Thank you, so proud.
There you go.
Yes. That's awesome, we really appreciate it. We appreciate the time.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Hey, did you get it? This is John.
Thank you so, so much.
Rachel, thank you.
We really appreciate it.
Oh, no, it's an honor to do so.
I know it wasn't, but a lot of notice, but we appreciate it.
Well, that's what we're told we do.
Because we gave them the option, and everybody chose you.
Oh, that's, that's, I do. What an honor. And make sure that you have cell phone numbers, because I know y'all need to get back to business to share with the council.
Okay, so should I give it to you or give it to Susan?
Okay, so that, that way, and yours as well, cut off.
So, is, is it still good for, is it still good for Wednesday? So far, at the corner of my mouth, we are too, things are kind of crazy this morning. We bought land. The one on Walker.
Hello?
Hey, Kevin, let's take council picture. No, rather than that.
How's this one different from the other one?
Which one?
Yeah. The first one.
Well, this one's got Bron. It's got John.
Was he in?
I just. I'm being careful of my little thing. A lot of things to say.
Great seeing you, man.
Seeing that empty chair up there and going, what a wonderful world. Everybody, can we take a picture, you mind, if you don't, come on. Hey, Kevin, let's go.
Come on, come on. Listen, I'm a front row kind of picture guy. So happens we're this tall.
Let's go, Larry. Larry, come, somebody.
Do it again.
One more, one more.
Do it again.
One more.
Do it again.
I need a shot.
That roll of film is good.
Okay, let's go down here. Let's stay here.
Wait, not wait.
Wait, what?
Hey, who had the cigars, aren't we supposed to all have cigars or something?
Okay. I'll give you one. Okay, now it's seven twenty. Now, time is seven twenty-seven, we are going to reconvene into the regular town council meeting session. Okay, item number two. Item number three. To discuss and consider and act upon electing a council member to serve as mayor pro temp. Council, Rachel, may I tell this right off, Rachel?
Mayor and council, as you know, the charter states that at the very next council meeting, when the newly elected officials are seated, that the council should appoint a council member to sit as mayor pro temp. I would point out that section 3.06 of the town charter that was also on the election required that a vacancy in the mayor's position be filled by special election within 120 days. However, the Home Rule Charter Committee recommended revising section 3.06 of the charter by adding a new subsection for filing a mayoral vacancy by appointment. This recommendation was presented to the residents of Sunnyvale as Proposition A on the May 4, 2019 special election ballot, and it passed. As a result, section 3.06 of the charter will now be amended to allow council to appoint, as the new mayor, a person that consents in the following order: mayor pro temp, town council member, and then any person qualified for office under the charter. If you have any questions, we're free to answer them.
Also, a very important position, so. So, at this time, I'm going to ask for a nomination for a mayor pro temp candidate from the council.
Mr. Mayor, with respect to our past mayor pro temp, Jim Wade, he did an outstanding job, and we agreed that we would nominate somebody generally annually. With that said, I would like to nominate Ryan Finch as mayor pro temp for this next coming year.
Are there any additional nominations for the mayor pro temp position? Okay, if there are no additional recommendations, can I have, you'll make a motion on this, right? Can I have a motion to appoint Mr. Ryan Finch as the mayor pro temp for the year 2019-2020?
Mayor, council, I'll make that nomination, Ryan Finch as mayor pro temp for the upcoming year.
Motion made by Mr. Larry Allen to appoint Mr. Ryan Finch as the 2019-2020 mayor pro temp. Is there a second? Or second? Second by Mr. Clark, everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. Motion passed 6-0. Supporting the motion, Mr. Kevin Clark, Mr. Larry Allen, Mr. Ryan Finch, Mr. Jonathan Freeman, Mr. Jim Wade, and Mayor Saji George. Opposing the motion is Mr. Mark Egan. Moving on to, before I move on, I just want to take a second to thank Mr. Jim Wade for his diligence and honorable service as the mayor pro temp for the last year. And I also want to congratulate Mr. Ryan Finch for willing to take on this important role, and I wish you all the best. So council, I'm going to table item number four, that is the Resolution 19-16, a resolution of the town council of the town of Sunnyvale adopting rules or procedure for the town council of Sunnyvale, Texas. We had some discussions about it, and as I recommend that, if you have any inputs on the text of the rules, please send them to Susan Guthrie, and we will bring that back to workshop session so that we can have additional discussions. Then one that is to your satisfaction, we'll bring it back for adoption into a future council meeting. Okay. Council, next is the consent agenda items, that's item number five through seven. Are there any of these items anyone would like to remove from the consent agenda? That is the considered approval minutes of the regular meeting of the town council for April 22, 1919. Act upon the second reading of ordinance 19-12, an ordinance of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, adopting the town's code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials, repealing all prior ordinances or resolutions related to the adoption of the town's code of ethics and conduct for elected and appointed officials, and providing an effective date. Seven, act upon Resolution 19-17, a resolution of the town of Sunnyvale, Texas, finding that ongoing electric delivery company LLC's application for approval to amend its distribution cost recovery factor pursuant to chap 16, Texas Admin Court 25 dot 243, to increase distribution rates within the town should be denied. Finding that the town's reasonable rate case expenses shall be reimbursed by the company. Finding that the meeting at which this resolution is passed is open to the public as required by law, requiring notice of dissolution to the company and legal counsel. If no one would like to remove any of the consent agenda items, can I have a motion to approve consent agenda items five through seven as presented?
Motion approved, items five through seven as presented.
Motion made by Mr. Clark to approve, sorry, second by Mayor Pro Temp Finch to approve consent agenda items five through seven as presented. Everyone heard the motion? All in favor, signify. All opposed, motion passed 7-0. Council, I am going to change the order of the agenda so that our independent auditor can, you know, leave a little early. So I'm going to pull forward item number 12, that is to discuss and consider and act upon the independent auditor's report on financial statements. Should I tell this out to Phyllis first? Phyllis?
Good evening, mayor and council. In accordance with the town charter, each year, an annual audit is to be conducted by a certified public accountant. As appointed by town council, this year, for fiscal year ending September 30, 2018, Mike Ward, accounting and financial consulting, was appointed by town council. He completed the September 30, 2018 year in audit. He presented to the audit committee on April 29, 2019, and he is here this evening to present the same to the council and ask, sir, any questions you may have.
Counsel, any question for Phyllis? It's okay, it's all right. But you remembered a lot of things to say without me looking.
Thank you for.
Good evening again, welcome.
Mayor and town council, I want to first say thank you very much for the opportunity to do the audit for this fiscal year. It was a wonderful experience, they're really, the staff, Phyllis and Liz, really went out of their way to provide me everything that I needed. It was, I had no issues, no problems, that, we didn't work out, everything worked smoothly. I would like to start by saying that the report is 100, almost 121 pages, so it shouldn't take more than 45 minutes to get through this, so. But if you'll turn to page, I was just kidding, by the way. If you'll turn to page five and page six, this is probably the most important aspect, most important part of the audit, and that's the independent auditor's report. If you'll read through this, you'll note that it's a clean opinion, which is basically what's called an unmodified or unqualified opinion. It states that the financial statements referred to in this book and throughout the 121 pages reflect the financial position of September 30, 2018. I would like to point several, there's probably four or five different key components that I like to look at normally when I do a presentation for the audit. There is a lot of information, but these four or five items are really, come in handy. Page 11, this is a summarized version, it's of the balance sheet, basically, the statement of net position as of September 30. I like to focus on this smaller version as opposed to going to the actual financial statements because, number one, it compares it to the prior year, kind of gives you an idea of growth or decline or whatever took place during the year. If you'll look, it's basically three columns of information, the governmental activities, which is mainly the general fund. There was an 18.8% increase during the year, so it showed a considerable amount of growth. If you'll look at the middle column, this is the business utilities type area. It's accounted for almost like a business entity. There was a 36.2% increase in your bottom line fund balance for the year. And overall, about 28.1% increase. So there was some pretty significant growth, as you would expect for this year. But overall, again, it's about almost 28%. Kind of similar to what I just presented, but this is the statement of net position, which is the income statement, basically, for the same components, the governmental activities and business activities. You can tell down at the very bottom of each one of these, there was significant growth. But overall, an increase of about $3.5 million in 2018 for the governmental side, and about $7.7 million growth in 2018 for the business side. Most of what took place that increased the growth within the governmental side was a lot of developer contributions, there was about three, almost $3.2 million of developer contributions, which really bumped up the number this year. I will also note that on page 14, it's a small number, but there's what's called a prior period adjustment towards the bottom of about $69,000. That reflects the bringing on of your Gatsby 75, which is other pension benefits for the year. Page 16, towards the bottom, it's important to note that your outstanding debt decreased about 8.7% for the year, so there was some payoffs that took place during the year, which is always good compared to growing the debt. Page 20, this is the actual statement of net position. This is the full financial statement for the government-wide financial statements. You can tell from looking at this that we, again, we ended the year with $50.6 million in total combined fund balance, of which, and that's both the business side and the government side, that represents about $38 million in net assets, which is your infrastructure, and that's the undepreciated portion of your, of all of your building, your infrastructure. But what's most important is you ended the year with about, almost $8.4 million in unrestricted, which means that's the available money to grow for the year. Page 23, this is a standard balance sheet for the governmental funds, and the reason that this is a little different, and it's something that I'd like to point out, is the fact that this is the actual governmental funds. And what's different about this and the financials that I referred to earlier, and that's why the fund balances are different, is this essentially leaves out your capital assets, it leaves out your debt, and it leaves out anything that's not accounted for within one fiscal year. So it basically tells you what you have at this particular end of the year to function for the next year. And with that being said, you had about $12.2 million in total fund balance. Of that, about $5.2 million of unrestricted. And that's really it for most of the financial statements, starting on page 32 through about 20-something pages are the notes to the financial statements. There's a lot of information, but this information will basically tell you every accounting method that takes place that prepares these financial statements, it'll tell you what's restricted, what's unrestricted, and the different classifications for that. And towards the back, it'll tell you the breakdown of your debt over the next five years and thereafter, of what you'll have to pay to pay off the debt. And that's pretty much it for the financial statements, unless you have any questions.
Counsel, are there any questions?
May I have a question for you? Actually.
Sure.
Looking through this is an awful lot of numbers and a lot of data. I have complete confidence that Councilmember Wade has gone through every one of those numbers.
He has, I can assure you that he has.
And as we have gone through these, I'm sure all of us have looked at this and interpreted in different numbers in different ways, I come down to one question. When you look through this, do you find any weaknesses or deficiencies in our town budgeting or balloting or process that you evaluated or that you went through in the audit process?
Out of the 27 cities that I audit, this is probably one of the best as far as liquidity, growth, and when you also factor in your debt being as low as it is, it's all positive. Probably the one area, and I think Mr. Wade has brought this up every single time we've ever, ever met, would be your pension plan, having a liability. It went down this year, I was expecting it to be almost positive, because all of the other cities that I audit, because of the market conditions, it brought that liability up as an asset because of the market being so positive. But with this one, it left it still at, it's not something that is negative in any way, and that's something that we've discussed at every meeting, but it is the liability that everybody seems to be concerned about, it's $545,000 liability for your pension.
What's the page number again, sir?
Sir?
What's the page number?
Oh, I'm sorry, that's page 20. And it's a line item that shows the combined pension liability of 545. And like I mentioned before, with the Gatsby 75, which is just like the liability for the pension, it's called, they added the liability for the pension benefits, like post-retirement benefits for life insurance, for example, was also added to it, so that added another $84,000 to it. But that number last year, when the market wasn't as good, which, you know, I'm guessing that will go back to that number at some point in time and reach some sort of equilibrium, was about $700,000. was about seven hundred and forty-four thousand dollars. So, that's the one area that I think I would focus on, maybe, I think you guys are, you have a plan?
Yeah, actually, before the audit even came up, Liz and I had been talking about this, and she's already done some preliminary work for me on coming up with a methodology of starting to close that gap. It's not an unusual number at all in terms of our percentage funded, but it is something I think we could do better, so kind of depending on what happens with the legislative rollback and where we are at economically, we're looking at some models of closing that gap.
Is that something we'll be discussing during the budget retreat or under the term?
Yeah, we can definitely bring you some numbers there, but yeah, Liz and I have been discussing that for quite several weeks.
Thank you.
That's a good schedule, that, on page seventy-eight, which shows you where we have been and where we are now. Part of that increase is due to increased compensation also.
It's interesting to see how the actual market and the actual actuarial tables predict that number and calculate that number, there's a lot of gray area in that number, so it fluctuates a lot every year, so you have to kind of keep that in mind, that it could go up or down, but this is a really, this is kind of an all-time low, I think.
Counsel, are there additional questions for the auditor? Phyllis, do you have anything else to add?
I don't.
So, I know, Mr. Wade, you are the audit subcommittee, right? Who else was there? Mr. Clark, how are you?
Excellent.
Do you have any comments?
No, I just want to thank you for your work.
No, thank you, thank you for the opportunity, I really enjoyed it, and it was a really clean place, a really, a really, a lot of the information was provided to me way ahead of time, which is kind of unusual for a lot of cities that you go to, I do a lot of the smaller cities that have QuickBooks and that kind of stuff, and here, it's top-of-the-line, state-of-the-art, and a lot of the information was made available right up front.
Gotcha. So, before the subcommittee, Kevin used to sit right next to him, he moved to the other side, I don't know anything to do with the audit or not, but just make an observation.
No comments.
Thank you. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
If there are no comments, we need to adopt, or adopt this one, right? Okay. Counsel, can I have a motion to adopt independent auditor's report on financial statement for the year twenty eighteen?
So moved.
Motion made by Mr. Finch, so second.
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Freeman, to adopt independent auditor's report on financial statement for the year twenty eighteen. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify, all opposed, motion pass seven zero. Thank you very much, both of you. Counsel, let me find my spot under the package, give me a second. I'm almost there. Okay, this is the item number, it's a public hearing portion of the agenda, item number eight, this is to hold a public hearing, discuss and consider and act upon a request by Zeb Fish to approve a replight for the Stony Creek five A, Lot five R, Block B, at or about four ninety-five Buffalo Head Court. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening. Evening, Mayor, Town Council. The applicant, Mr. Fish, is representative for residential property in Stony Creek, Phase five A. When this property was originally platted, it was platted as a quote-unquote double-fronted slot, which required it to have a front yard setback on both sides, on Robin Ridge and Buffalo Head. The applicant received a variance to lower the seventy-foot requirement on Robin Ridge in order for him to build an appropriate-sized home on the lot, it restricted the size of the home that you could build. Now he's here just to finalize that variance and record the lot with those setbacks. Staff recommends approval, and commission also recommended approval.
Rashad, this house, if it's approved, would it face Buffalo Head or would it face Robin Ridge?
Well, the applicant could probably address that better than I.
Okay.
If he's changed anything, the variance was received quite some time ago, but my last recollection...
Yeah, I was going to ask about the location of the pool and the privacy concerns, but wait for the applicant, I just wanted.
Yes.
Counsel, any question for Mr. Jackson?
No, I think, I was on B of A when we, when this was approved, and all the neighbors had said okay, right, and there's no issues from neighbors at the time.
Correct, everyone was in favor of the variance request, the variance request and this plat itself too, they were notified about this plat as well.
Yes, sir.
Rachel, can you go to the next slide? That's not much better, is it? So, we can't read this drawing that's in our packet, so is the driveway going to come off of Buffalo Head? And where's the garage?
Again, I think that's a question for the applicant, based on the plans that I saw back, I believe it was twenty seventeen, the garage was going to come off of Buffalo Head Court.
So, is this thing around? This is going to be a J and two. This is going to be the corner. Okay. So, that means the front is going to be on Robin Ridge, and it's going to be a J-drive coming off of Buffalo, Buffalo Head.
The front is going to be off of Buffalo Head Court, side of the home will be facing...
Oh, the side is going to be on Robin Ridge?
Yeah, I think it's, if you look at this picture, it says, and then this block here is the garage.
Yeah.
So, facing the Buffalo Head.
That's true, yeah, that's true.
So, I just don't know the...
So, the garage is going to be out in front of the front of a house?
Let's wait and see, I don't know the answer either, that's why, a couple of questions on that. Okay. Anything else, Mr. Jackson?
No, sir, I will, I will say, and, I mean, the council can address the questions as they see fit, but the issue at hand is just the plat and the setbacks and approving that, and it is administrative, as far as the way the home is going to be orientated, that's, as long as it meets our UDO requirements, it's really nothing that, I mean, you can suggest some variations to the applicant, but that shouldn't withhold approval of the plat.
Okay, that's good to me, let's just ask some questions here, okay?
Right.
Okay. Okay, is the applicant here? Good evening, sir. Before you leave, would you make sure to sign up, that's a sign-up sheet out to the front, if you could, sign that with your name and address, that'd be helpful.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
So, with respect to the question on which way the garage would face, if you're looking at the home from Buffalo Head Court, it would be a side-facing garage, it would actually face the neighbor's home, so it wouldn't be, the garage would not face the street. Correct, off of Buffalo Head Court.
So, the house is facing Robin Ridge?
The house would face Buffalo Head Court, yeah.
Well, I don't get it, I'm sorry.
Can I, I've got, I've actually got a layout here.
Okay, maybe the picture is not right, I'm not sure.
Yes, it is.
What?
So, this is Buffalo Head Court here.
That's correct, so the garage is this, right?
Yes, and the garage would be here, so the driveway would have to come in and J-drive in from the side. So, these would just be windows, but the garage doors would face this neighbor's home.
Okay.
The garage door faces on four.
Yes.
Gotcha, good point. Is that clear for you?
It's clear, I'm not sure it's...
You like it, right?
Yeah. I think it looks, because of the layout of the other houses on Robin Ridge, it's the main thoroughfare.
Yeah.
Buffalo Head is not the main thoroughfare, so you put a side yard, a long side yard on Robin Ridge, with the back of their house going to their neighbors, which is not the typical layout we have.
Yeah.
You get a problem with that lot, I don't care what you try to do with it, it probably shouldn't have been left out there like it was, it's north of the lot. Probably why you need to build on it.
So, we heard this on the Board of Adjustments, and it is, I think it's had vacant for many years because of that, because it's such a weird shape.
Yeah.
And it was hard to get a house there.
Yeah, Homestead has a similar situation, and the house built there is pretty awkward, we've got backyard facing everybody else's front yard. So, Rashad, can we talk about the pool location, privacy, all of them at this time, or it's a later time?
I mean, you're welcome to discuss all that, but as far as approval is concerned, it's really just the plat, it's not necessarily the home and the orientation, as long as it is built to code, that's, I'm just, from a legal standpoint, maybe able to chime in better than I can, but that is my understanding.
I don't think anything, action you take tonight will govern where the pool is located other than setback lines and things like that.
A later time discussion, then.
It's more permitting, unless they're trying to build over a setback line or something like that, it might probably more likely to go to the Board of Adjustment.
It's already done, it's received approval.
So, could we end up with a wooden privacy fence along Robin Ridge?
All right.
Since that's not a main thoroughfare?
That phase, to my understanding, is required to have open fencing.
That's correct, all the neighbors have wrought iron fences.
Okay, so we won't end up with a wood privacy along Robin Ridge?
No, it's part of the PD, and the staff has required that as well.
It's not your intent, is it?
No.
So, all we're talking about is setbacks, and all the neighbors have agreed to the setbacks?
Well, the Board of Adjustment...
Board of Adjustments?
And that notice was sent out to all the neighbors, a few showed up, Mr. Clark was there as well, I believe, and we didn't have anybody opposed to it because the lot has set vacant for so long, and they felt like the variance wasn't excessive.
All right, thank you. So, the neighbors may be tired of, you know, weed growing and all kinds of...
Having a vacant lot, yeah, getting a resident.
Counsel, additional questions for the applicant? So, would you like to add anything else?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, so this is the public hearing portion of the agenda, if anyone would like to come, and any from the public would like to address this particular item, please come forward. No one is coming forward, so I'm going to close the public hearing on item number eight. Counsel, are there additional questions or discussions on this topic? Okay. If not, can I have a motion with respect to request by Zeb Fish to approve a replight for the Stony Creek five A, Lot five R, Block B, at or about four ninety-five Buffalo Head Court?
So moved to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve the application, and second by Mr. Finch. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify, all opposed, motion passed seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to the development services portion of the agenda, that is to, item number nine, discuss and consider and act upon a request by Ezekiel and Fabiola Cortez to approve a minor plight for the trip addition Lot one, Block A, at or about three five three East Trip Road. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, Town Council, this is somewhat a similar situation, applicant is representative for a property that was essentially never platted and is a non-conforming lot, they went before the Board of Adjustment and received a variance because the lot in itself is too small, if you, in order to meet our current standards. Our current standards and what it is zoned is SF three, which requires a one-acre size, the lot itself right now is point nine, yeah, point nine-two acres, and as well, the lot width is just a hundred and four feet. In order to develop in the town of Centerville, a lot, residential lot, you must plat it per the UDO, so in order to move forward, they received a variance, they couldn't get property on either side, they couldn't acquire additional land, so it was a hardship, they received that hardship and that's a variance, so now they're here just to record the lot so they can move forward with plating. Staff recommends approval, the plan is on, and commission recommended approval as well.
Counsel, are there any questions for staff? Is the applicant here? Would you like to come forward, sir? It's all right. Please, when you leave, sign your name and address outside, okay? So, would I just say anything about this application, any, anything you want to add?
Excuse me?
Any, any details you want to talk?
Well, I've got a picture that might help you, how it's going to be the house.
Counsel, question for the applicant? You're okay, thank you. So, this is not a public hearing item, right?
It is.
It is?
Is it a minor plight, or, let me see, it's a minor plight, you're correct, you're correct.
Yes or no?
That's my fault.
No, it's a minor plight.
Correct, okay. Counsel, are there additional questions or discussions on this topic? Okay, if not, can I have a motion to, with respect to request by Ezekiel and Fabiola Cortez to approve a minor plight for the trip addition Lot one, Block A, at or about three fifty-three East Trip Road?
So moved to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Egan to approve the application of the property at or about three fifty-three East Trip Road.
Second.
Second by Mr. Clark. Everyone heard the motion? Are there additional discussions? All in favor signify, all opposed, motion pass seven zero. Thank you very much. Moving on to item number ten, that is to discuss and consider and act upon a request by Ronnie Jones to approve an amended site plan for Hope Church at or about six twenty US Highway eighty. Mr. Jackson?
Mayor, Town Council, this application, actually, the original site plan received approval from Town Council just a few months ago. Upon construction, the applicant realized that there were some changes they needed to make with regard to the orientation of the parking lot, the building facades and interior floor plan, they've hired architect Mr. Ron Hobbs to finalize the details of that, so essentially, the details of the interior structure and the square footage is the same, it's just the exterior parking lot area and the facade itself has been upgraded as well, it's not as much stucco, it's more stone, but essentially, it's the same footprint. The applicant is here to provide additional details if you have questions.
Staff, are there any concerns?
No.
Okay. Counsel, any questions for staff?
Pre-engineered metal building.
That is the structure itself, the steel frame, from my understanding, but the building itself will be clad with stone, and the architect can speak to that in more detail if need be.
So, if you look at the drawings over on several pages in, where it's got the facades, it looks like you see the three different types of material. Is the top type of material metal?
That is a, my understanding, a metal roof, yes.
Understand what?
Metal roof.
Metal roof. Looks like it's flat above that brick.
Now, if you look at the top elevation, you'll see that the roof is somewhat sloped. That is shown at the, on the side.
Are you talking about?
On the elevation below.
Right here. That's the roof. This is the, that's the roof, yeah. Look at the, see the picture. Picture, so you're seeing.
Okay, he tells me that's the roof, so I'm gonna, listen.
Alright.
Metal building that's clad in stone?
I, I could say, I'll let the architect, but the way I understand it, that would be a metal framed building, metal framed building clad with the appropriate board and then the stone. I don't think it's a metal building, but he can, yes, please.
Good evening, sir. Good evening, I'm Ron Hobbs. The, the building that we're talking about, the, the structure of it is a, considered a pre-engineered metal building frame and that is simply the columns and the beams. The, the exterior walls are steel studs, sheathing and two types of stone. There's a, a thick veneer stone that's down low and then at the, I believe it's about the seven foot line where you see the setback, that is natural stone, but it's, it's adhered to the, the concrete sheathing that, that we're using. The, the area that you see that's above is a standing seam metal roof. And, but the, the notation of pre-engineered, that sort of has bad connotations. It, it sounds like it's a metal building, but there's no metal siding on this building at all.
Rashad on the signage. It says perforated metal panels, Hope Church.
What you're, you're seeing there over the, the front canopy, the metal panels, and it's not really metal panels, it's a, it's a screen. The stone goes continuous and this is a perforated metal screen with the letters on it, so it's, it's really more the signage with the name of the, the church on it. We didn't want to just put basically letters, stick letters on the outside of the building. We didn't want to change the material to stucco or something else there. So, this is actually held off, the, the metal perforations are held off the brick or the stone so that you actually see the stone through it.
Oh, I see, so you put the board on the stone and can see the.
Right, that's exactly right.
Stone through the perforations.
Yes, we want to see it through.
Is that, any concerns about the signage?
I don't have any concerns, but we will have more detailed drawings submitted for a signed permit application that will require at the building permit stage.
Okay, to make sure to comply with that requirement?
Yes, staff will review this again.
Council, any additional questions for the applicant? So, before you sit down, would you be, before you leave, would you be sure to sign your name?
I'd be happy to. Thank you.
Council, other additional discussions on this topic? If not, can I have a motion with respect to request by Ronnie Jones to approve an amended site plan for Hope Church, Ator About 620 US Highway AD?
Mayor, I'll make motion approved.
Motion made by Mr. Allen to approve the application.
Second.
Mr. Egan?
Second.
Second by Mr. Egan. Everyone heard the motion? Other additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven zero. Thank you very much. Pastor again, thank you for letting the invocation. Thank you very much. Moving on to the fire department portion of the agenda, that is to discuss and consider and act upon authorizing the town manager to execute a letter of intent between the town of Sunnyvale and City of Mesquite to explore the feasibility of contracting with the City of Mesquite for fire EMS dispatching services. Good evening, Chief, how are you?
Good evening, Mayor, Council, how are you all today this evening?
Doing well.
Congratulations to Councilman Freeman, so once again. And all you guys.
Oh, come on, you run unopposed.
Tonight is basically, this kind of initiated from the City of Mesquite, Fire Chief Kirby. He wanted to try to go ahead and get us some sort of formalized letter of intent to put both parties on, on point that we're ready to proceed. They obviously signed it first and it's just now a matter of our, our town manager to sign it so we could go ahead and start. Rest assured, we have been working on this still, at least on our end. So, we just currently, as of last week, even met with Mullerola. I know when we were talking about all of this in, in Mesquite, we were talking about consultants and things like this, but I had a, a good meeting with Mullerola and their reps and they're willing to help us in, in all ways that we, they can as well. So, hopefully, we'll be, we'll be sharing, or not so much sharing, some costs, but we'll save some by having them on board.
Do you have a target date to get this completed, Chief?
I have some budget money that I certainly would like to have this by October, before October, but then again, that's the pricing and some of the monies and things that we're working on now, that has to be in the interlocal that we're gonna be, that we're gonna be producing.
So, money is already allocated, right? Two hundred thousand is already there, right?
That is correct, sir.
It's in your disposal, right?
Yes, sir.
So, Mayor and Council, part of this letter of intent is so that Mesquite, we can begin working with Mesquite's consultant to develop the IT needs, so part of the cost and the timeline will depend on what is a result of us moving forward with this LOI.
So, this will facilitate the whole process, right?
Yes.
Council, any question for Chief? Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Susan, anything else you want to add? Leslie, anything else you want to add? Okay, can I have a motion authorizing the town manager to execute a letter of intent between the town of Sunnyvale and City of Mesquite to explore the feasibility of contracting with the City of Mesquite for fire EMS dispatching services?
So, move.
Motion made by Mr. Finch.
Second.
Second by Mr. Freeman to, to authorize town manager to execute a letter of intent. Everyone heard the motion? Other additional discussions? All in favor signify. All opposed, motion passed seven zero. Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Leslie and Susan. Now, let me try to get to the other side as fast as I can. Okay. Moving on to the item number thirteen, that is the town manager portion of the agenda, that is to discuss and consider and act upon a development agreement with the TF Stony Creek LP to provide for funding and construction of a portion of roadway connecting Hounsell Lane and Nance Road. Ms. Guthrie?
Yes, sir, I think this agenda item has been on making a record for the number of times it's been on the agenda, but we are ready at this time. If you recall, the, the school district is going to be building Hounsell to a point and then connecting over to Nance on what we're calling a spur section. Originally, this came to council and then we, we pulled it at the last moment because the ISD decided to change the trajectory of where they were connecting in order to meet some citizen concerns about where it was meeting. When they did that, it changed the distance that the town would now be responsible for. So, we've been in negotiations with the developer who is also responsible for repaving Nance. And so, what we had asked them is if they would be willing to do this as part of their repaving of Nance on the section that's closest to their development. They agreed to do that initially just in, in lieu of their traffic mitigation fees that they would have to pay on that section. Well, when it was, when the ISD changed where it was connecting and it made it bigger, no longer would that amount of money just cover that construction cost. It was a lot more expensive to build. So, we were negotiating with them on what that cost would be. They came back with their costs that they projected and we have now been able to come to agreement with them on how that could be done. And basically, it would be done by waiving the eleven hundred dollars per lot traffic mitigation fee and that would be up to a value of a hundred and eighty-four thousand four hundred dollars. And then the balance would be funded through a hundred and twenty-nine thousand dollars from existing traffic mitigation funds that cover the cost of construction. This is to serve the tract four, Phase 4B and 4C. And really, our biggest concern was not allowing that traffic to come down Nance, that it would direct it over onto Hounsell. So, our intent, once this is built, would be to remove that section of Nance so that you could not go and connect to Collins Road from, from Nance. That would happen after the construction and, and until that time, it would stay open and, as you know, is being repaired at this point. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. There's a drawing in there. Rachel, I don't know if you can go to the actual gap drawing. It shows the blue section is the section that we're talking about.
So, while Rachel is pulling it up, so the staff's recommendation or intent to remove this section of the Nance is for safety concerns.
Yes.
And we want to make sure that nobody exit out of Nance on the Collins. That's, that's the reason for removing, correct?
Right, so if you see on this drawing here, the green, the lime green section is what the ISD is building and that's just been approved, right, Lyle? Right, so they are gonna proceed with construction immediately. The blue section is what we're talking about, which connects Hounsell to Nance. The yellow section is what the developer already was gonna be responsible for doing. You all took action, I believe it was last October on that, if, before I arrived, but they're gonna already be doing that, so it made sense to connect it. One thing I do want to draw your attention to though is, is that the yellow section, you all had already authorized that to be asphalt. So, we had somewhere in this whole equation, the surface was going to change. And originally, we were trying to change it when it hit to the lime green so that the blue would also be done in concrete, but obviously that, with this extension, it's cost prohibitive, so the new agreement does call for the blue section to be built in asphalt, as is the yellow section.
And that means the traffic from the Stony Creek will be exiting through Hounsell Road onto Collins.
Correct, right, and so really, our hope is that as this develops, that those coming down Nance will only be able to turn right, not left, because as you know, there's limited visibility at that intersection. So, anybody who's wanting to turn left really would need to go circle back around, go down Hounsell and get the light to turn left.
So, the residents basically have to take the Hounsell and go to the Stony Creek?
Yes.
Or, or the buses will take the Nance, take a right on the spur and come to school, correct?
Yes.
And what prevents, does the school buses go out on, on Nance and go to Collins? Or it's only one way?
Okay, I think you lost me there, Mayor.
So, when the school buses exit, so they take left on Nance and turn right on Collins?
Okay, wait, the buses?
Is the Nance is going to be one way or two way?
Nance is two way.
Okay.
Because parents, okay, parents who are going into the intermediate school are gonna turn right on Nance, grab the lime green, come back around to Hounsell.
Okay.
So, they won't go left on Nance unless they're gonna turn right onto Collins.
Can buses go back from the Hounsell to the green to Nance?
They could, but I don't, I don't, I don't believe that is their, their intention, Mayor. They could, but I don't believe that's the intention. They, they're gonna wanna go to the signalized intersection to go north or south. So, that rear drive behind the school is a bus drive. The drive on the, in the front of the school is for drop off of kids, the, the parents.
Right.
So, they're either gonna go, when they drop off, the buses are coming south to Hounsell. I don't see them going unless it's some unique situation, back north on Hounsell to Nance. They're gonna go straight to the, to the intersection to go north or south on Collins.
Gotcha.
Any, any of the turns, whether the buses on Nance want to turn north or south, or a bus wanted to turn in on Collins Road are probably not gonna get done, because the bus can't make those turns.
And, and I have met with the superintendent on this plan and he was very supportive of this and I think, and looked at it in terms of what their traffic pattern was planning to be and this worked for him. And we had the conversation about not making lefts on Nance. So, to answer your question, I don't believe any of their traffic patterns call for left-hand turns onto Nance, or from Nance onto Collins.
They would be trying to turn onto Nance from Collins? So, school buses are going to just avoid Nance Road at all?
No, they're, they're using Nance Road, which is why they were building that spur, that lime green spur.
They're just not gonna use the leg of Nance Road that goes from Collins Road to that first drive in, which is the road that goes in front of the school. They're not gonna use that piece, because if they, if they were to use that piece, that means regardless of which way they're going, but it means that they either have to make a right or left turn off of Nance onto Collins and they can't do that. Physically, they can't do that. Or they can try it, but they're probably gonna be stuck there with a bunch of kids. They, it would not be advisable and there would be no reason for them to turn off of, going north on Collins and turning right onto Nance. There would be no reason for that because they could have gone there from Hounsell.
Okay, I actually have their traffic plan here too.
Susan, what, they're gonna go up and then go down? This is gonna be a bus, this is a bus.
Okay, that route is one way. Right, that road that you just put your head on is one way.
Right.
And so.
Go four rounds and go down, then they'll go out this way.
Exactly.
They'll never use the end of the Nance against Collins.
Right.
So, did I also understand that you seem to, or I interpreted it, we're decommissioning Nance Road between the northernmost Blue Point and the northernmost Green Point?
That is our intention. I've talked with Lyle quite a bit about this and, I mean, I'm welcome for him to comment, but if you look at, if you don't do that, merging those two traffic lanes together, I think it's very complicated and probably not in our best interest. Do you want to comment?
It's not in the best interest, as Susan said, to have traffic going on both that blues piece and then the part that you just mentioned, that the plan is to decommission. We want everybody as much as possible to be using Hounsell to access Collins, so a logical extension of that is to remove that piece of Nance Road as part of the overall development of, of the Stony Creek work.
And I just gave the traffic plan from the ISD to Mr. Wade and he'll pass that down so that you can all see what their planned motions are.
So, if I'm dropping a child off at the elementary school, how do I get to the intermediate, intermediate school? Or if I'm picking up one, how do I pick one up at the intermediate school? I'm not, I don't have that traffic plan for the school?
Right here.
Well, it says it's one way, which is one way. Now, this says one way right here. So, that's one way there. I come back to Nance, go back up here and take this back here.
Yes.
So, how many people are gonna do that as opposed to go this thirty feet to Collins?
Well, if you do a no right or a no left turn here, then of course, they're gonna do that and you can put a piece of pie of barrier.
Triangle.
Triangle, thank you.
Right.
That would prohibit them from turning left here.
There's no reason why.
You could just, we could just abandon this too?
Well, but you want to be able to allow people to enter.
Well, there's no place for them to go, 'cause this is one way, the other way.
Yeah, well, they can come here.
They're gonna go all the way this way and?
Yeah. Yeah, probably not a lot of reason.
I don't see a lot of doing that. However, you have to realize that these folks coming from here are going to go all the way down here and go all the way and make this circle.
Yes.
Wow.
So Kevin, would you care to explain that one more time?
From my understanding, Jim, this is going to be the bus drop-off for the elementary school now, the stop piece. And the back is going to be the drop-off for the cars. This is only going to be for buses, and this is going to be for the cars. So the car drop-off is going to use this, the car drop-off is going to use this. Bus drop-off here and bus drop-off here.
Kevin, which direction are they going to use?
Cars are going north.
On the intermediate. Which way are the cars coming in to the intermediate school? And which way are they going out?
It's on that traffic thing.
Because my whole thing is, they're either going to, they're going to have to make a, they're going to have to make a circle somewhere in Hounsell Road. Because if you take, if I take a right on Hounsell Road?
Yeah, they go down to the spur, and then they come back around on Hounsell.
Okay, so show me where someone's going to drop their child off at the intermediary school and how they're going to get back around. Because if we're going to decommission the end of Nance Road, then I'm going to have to turn on Hounsell Road. I can't use that bus lane. I'm going to have to go down this, and I'm going to have to make a U-turn somewhere.
No, no, no.
Okay, sorry. Thanks, Susan.
The way it looks to my comment is that you would come here, you go here, drop off, come down to the green spur, come back around and exit.
He goes, he goes and drop off, come back down.
Yes.
Or give the elementary.
Now, they're going to be staggered out.
Staggered out.
I'm not sure which one's first.
I think elementary.
So, Mr. Mayor, I think respectfully, I think we're getting a little sidetracked on our, on our whole issue here in that regardless of how the traffic's going to flow, the proposal is about this spur that has to happen either way, our connection. And so there have been, there has been, I know I've seen many plans of how the school's going to traffic flow, and they're going to, there is a comprehensive plan, I think we've seen. And so this connection that we're discussing really has to happen either way because we're not, regardless of how the bus traffic flows, we're looking at how traffic will flow eventually from the residences, those residential areas back there, back to Hounsell.
And also to make sure that the traffic doesn't exit out of Nance to Collins.
Right. Because it's an unsafe intersection. And so I know there's a lot of debate about the bus traffic, and I've said in a lot of those meetings as well, I can't recall every detail, but I do know that the, that the school traffic planners have a comprehensive plan that will account for the safety of our residents. And trust me, they don't want to hear from parents either because that's where they're taking it from, is a lot of input from parents on where they drop off. And so I'd just like to call us back to this, what our focus is here, this, this connection and the debate on that connection itself.
Okay. Thank you, Ryan, for, Mr. Wade?
Mayor, I think that's, that's good comments. Thank you, Mayor Protem. But, you know, I'm really having problems with, number one, closing Nance, knowing that eventually Collins is going to be four-lane. That was not the original intent, as I understood it, to creating that second entry point for Stony Creek. So we've actually effectively decommissioned, made a driveway out of Nance Road, and I don't think that was what the original intent was. And I'm real concerned about us trying to redirect traffic. We don't do a very good job of that now.
So just a question on that, because this will be prior to my time. So if you look at the original plans from some of the Platts, I've seen this, this Hounsell Road, now called Hounsell Road, would have connected back. And there was, at some point, I believe, some discussion about us having to make a decision on whether we were going to decommission Nance or whether we were going to improve Nance, right? And so there was, because one of the Platts I saw had this Hounsell, now called Hounsell, go straight back through, correct?
It's not the original place of Hounsell.
Right. It was, it was something different, but it was to, then there would have to be a discussion about, do we keep Nance or do we decommission Nancy and go with Hounsell? Am I off on?
No. The original intent for Hounsell was to go through the school property to have an access point for Stony Creek five, C, D, and E. And that has been altered now to move up, but we created an entry point for Stony Creek four, which required us to use Nance Road, which is still a viable roadway, it just needs to be improved. We have residents that live on the end of Nance Road, and frankly, we probably ought to resurrect the idea of, can you punch Nance all the way through to East Park?
But we're keeping Nance.
Well, we're not. We're just decommissioning part of it.
No, we're only, we're only decommissioning after it connects to Hounsell so that it is a viable roadway, right?
Right. Now we're running traffic through the school.
Well, it's a, it's a, it's a signalized light. I mean, that's why we're doing it is Hounsell at Hounsell, right? And so it's a, it's an improved roadway. And so I guess my question would be whether we sent the traffic down Hounsell, which is an improved cement roadway, or sent them down Nance, which to me creates some issues because of how that dips there. It seems like we're accomplishing the goal of getting the traffic to Collins, the safest, safest route. I mean, still accomplishing the same thing. I guess that's where I'm a little bit confused because I'm trying to figure out how, if we decommission from that blue section down, how we're impeding or how we're, how we're creating an issue for the residents. Because we're still connecting to a roadway that they can use to get out. If anything, it's, it's going to provide them more access back to Collins, regardless of whether we improve Collins to four lanes or not, right? Because we're still getting them all the way back there from the back all the way to Collins.
As I'm looking, I think, I think Mr. Wade has a phenomenal point. We have now turned the road that goes right by our, our elementary school into a main road. A road where you're going to have an entire sub-development have to drive by our elementary school to get to Collins. And I don't think, I mean, and keep in mind, I understand that this may not be the discussion that we're supposed to be having, but in, if we decommission Nance, you are basically forcing all of these lots that we're seeing back here to have to drive right by our elementary school to get to Collins, which is the main thoroughfare of our town.
So you're saying that?
Which is not only.
That's a safety issue.
Sunnyvale four, I'm sorry, Stony Creek four, but the eventual Stony Creek fives are going to be also using that road.
But it's, it's not like the school is sitting right on the road. I mean, there is substantial distance between the roadway and the school. And if we have kids already that close to the roadway, then we have another problem. And so I don't, I think your point, Councilman Freeman, was about safety, right? About safety of our kids. And so if you look at how this offset is, it's, there's a substantial offset between the roadway and the school.
Yeah, and I think if we were talking 20 years ago about safety and kids getting run over by cars, but in these days with the other safety issues that have kind of come up with schools, I like the idea of our school being way far away from any main road.
But if you look at how we would have to improve Nance, you're sending them to an intersection that is not safe. And so you're sending, you have more risk if you send them to a valley to make it, to make a crossing, crossing onto Collins.
Sure.
And so, and the options of signalizing that are probably not valid because you have a signal on each side of that.
I, I've driven up and down Rance Road numerous times, however, when I leave, I take a right, so I can't speak to taking a left.
Yeah.
And I would probably agree with you. The visibility going left is not great.
We drove, yeah.
You know, as it becomes four lanes, maybe that changes. And I can't speak to what might happen going forward.
But not any worse than the visibility of Jobson and Town East, top of a hill, lots of shrubbery.
I will say, the plan for Hounsell, at one point, to speak to your point, tract five, the developer for that property was on the hook to pay for that connection. That was going to be a collector road for that track. Keep in mind, that was going to be 77 to 80 lots coming on to Hounsell, so that's going to be similar to what we have designed here. The idea was, instead of, since we don't have a developer in tract five, we have existing right, right way with Nance, and the alignment of Hounsell can easily change at this point. We need that connection because we have the tract three, the tract four that's going to be emptying out on it. So that was the whole background to all that, the reasoning for it. And then the school district decided to move forward with the intermediate school, which caused the spur, and now we have the gap.
And, Rashad? Can I just clarify? The entry to Nance is a secondary entry to that neighborhood. Is that correct?
It is. You still have the main entry off of Stony Creek Boulevard, and that will be a gated entry. It's not just come and go as you please. The people who go in and out of there will live in that subdivision, that phase.
So I think the, I think the thought is that generally, unless you lived probably way back there, it was just a lot more convenient, you probably wouldn't want to deal with the traffic at the school during that period of time and probably going to go at the main entry of your neighborhood.
And I would definitely agree with you. School time, I've gone into that subdivision. That is not the easiest subdivision to get around. You have that one entrance, and the houses that are right here off of Nance Road probably take longer to get to than most, I mean, you have to cut back, curve back. So my guess would be that most of the residents that live on this area, it'd probably be easier to go through the second gate than it would be the first one. And again, not saying that that would be for sure until it's done, but that would be my guess.
Right. So I guess what's, you know, discussion, are we discussing whether we want to continue with the piece marked in blue, or are we discussing if we want to decommission Nance? And I think that's, you know, decommissioning Nance is further down the road, isn't it?
Refresh my memories, what grades are going to be in the intermediate school?
Four, five, six.
Three, four, five.
Three, four, five.
Three, four, five. So it's K one, two, three, four, five, and six.
So Susan, have we discussed the?
So how would we prevent car usage of the bus lane? How are they going to keep you from using the bus lane?
Right, so I think...
Because that's going to be the most direct route to the elementary school, the most direct route to the middle school, most direct route to high school. It's going to be, use that bus route and go straight through and connect to the back of the elementary, which is where some parents will have to go. So how would you propose?
So the bus route is that, isn't it the circle in front of the elementary school in the new?
I think he's referring to, you're referring to the bus routes next to the intermediary school, right?
What kind of key, first? You mean, you're taking the loop right straight down to the back of the elementary school or onto the high school or onto the middle school?
Right. I think that's going to be their...
Red, they make the big loop and coming back down, and...
I will tell you this, I know that when they redid the middle school, and they went from the two-lane to the one-lane, I had that same thought. Our residents are pretty, pretty good people. You tell them not to do it, they're not going to do it. Now, when it's not school hours, might be a little different because I see people going the wrong way down that middle school lane all the time after school hours. But I would say if they know they can't turn down there during school hours, it won't be an issue. My personal opinion.
Right. Also, the school has the, their, I don't know if they're police officers, their safety, safety people, you know, that will be involved.
Okay, coming back to our agenda.
Dallas County sheriffs.
Coming back to agenda item. So I think the action here is to agree with Stony Creek TF agreement, providing funding and construction of a portion of the roadway connecting Hounsell and Nance Road. Are there additional discussions or concerns on this one?
Mayor, I've looked at this proposal since the beginning of when they started drawing this a couple of years ago, and, you know, I'm not a traffic guy, I acknowledge that. I wasn't in favor of some of the things we've talked about and done, but the bottom question is, how do we complete the project? And there's going to be a cut-through through the elementarys and high school, and actually there already is, off a trip road right through the ballpark. It's a cut-through, it doesn't look like a cut-through, but it is. So cut-through traffic, it's just going to become a road with a school on either side, just like we have in many other neighborhoods. We got a road that goes down Potte, we got elementary on one side, Potte on the other side. It's different than our community, it's different than where we are, but here's where we're at, and we have to complete something. And I'll leave it to the experts to come up with, hey, this is where we're at. So it may not be, it looks like a high-speed exit and entry from an airport perspective, but I understand how they're not wanting to merge traffic head-on, and we certainly don't want collisions there, that people go in opposite direction with Nance in and out of there. I see that being a dangerous scenario, especially with teenage drivers coming off our schools anyway. So we, here we are with a piece of section that we got to do something with, with Nance, and I think on the agenda is how we get there from that. So I trust the people that have done the mitigation and the traffic surveys with the school and city to have come up with the best possible plan. Like anything else, if it doesn't work, we'll redo something, whether flow traffic one way or the other from the front of the school, the elementary to the back, it's a change from when they actually opened the elementary five years ago or six. So that will evolve, I believe that. So back to what we do with the section of Nance, it's there, it's probably the best connectivity, may not be the most desirable, may not be what we envisioned 10 years ago, five years ago, or two years ago. But I think that's where we're at, and so bringing this back to Nance, this connectivity with the blue, I think that's where we're at. And so, Mayor, where are we going from this?
I'm just going to have one more round of time for discussion, then we'll make a motion, other additional discussions. Okay, if not, I'm going to call for a motion with respect to develop an agreement with the TF Stony Creek LP to provide for funding and construction of a portion of roadway connecting Hounsell Lane and Nance Road.
Mayor, I have a question. I'm sorry, before we get to that motion. In the contract, I can't see where we have a start expected date, a timeline. I'm sure it's in there somewhere. I can't see it, so can somebody kind of point me to that?
You're referring to the start of the construction of the, of the blue piece?
In actuality, yes, but also the blue all the way to the yellow. I read through the contract, I don't see where it says, hey, you're going to complete by X date. So we have a contract, an agreement, a resolution, and?
Well, it will cohand in hand to a large extent with the construction and the approval of the plans for those future phases of Stony Creek. We don't have a specific start date. Sue, correct me if I'm...
Yeah, it says in 2.05 timing, Starwood shall begin the project concurrent with the rehabilitation of Nance Road as per required in the preliminary plat for Stony Creek, tract four, item six, October 25th, 2018. Project shall be complete within one year of the date the first phase is released for construction.
Correct. That's, that's where I was going with that.
So, you were.
Good one.
Nice play. I like that.
That was a great comment, it was right for me.
So, in essence, if they decide to opt out of Stony Creek five and six, then we have no agreement in reality of yellow construction. Is that correct?
So the yellow is based upon tract four, phase four B and four C, is what the yellow is linked to.
That's correct. The yellow and the blue would be constructed with the phases that Susan just laid out.
So it's four B and C, the ones that are right there at the end of Nance? Or those are the ones on?
That is correct.
I'm sorry?
The end of Nance on the north side of Nance.
Is it this section or is it this section?
It's, it's all of that up in there, yes.
It includes this here. And then we'll start this now, so once they start this now, within a year, then they have another year or two to start and complete that. So we're looking at a two-year period of time, roughly?
Roughly, I mean, it depends on when we release it for construction.
But until that time, there's only the one person at the end of Nance that uses Nance. One house is the only user of Nance, and that's why that green lime green thing is being built. And that's why that green, lime-green thing is being built, so that until this happens, there's nobody except for the one person who's using Nance and is familiar with it, and we've talked with them. So everybody's gonna be on that lime-green thing that'll be built this summer. So until those people are there, there's really no need for it. So that's the reason for the timing.
So you answered the question, we're gonna, the green is gonna be built by the school before they open up-
Yes.
At the end of this deal. Where we're working Nance, but yellow and blue lines are futuristic somewhere at least two years away, it looks like.
I don't, honestly, I don't see it being that long. They already submitted the plans for the phases of the subdivision. I've been working with them to get them ready to be released for construction. And as I say, when they're building those phases 3 and 4, they would be, the yellow and blue parts of Nance and Hounsell would be constructed as part of that development.
Fair enough. So we're gonna have about two years to look at the traffic flow to say, hey, we got a problem, not a problem, do something, come up with something, spin on it, rub some dirt on it, do something with it. But at the end of the green road, when the school makes that stub to the blue, do we have a contingency plan to mark that off so we don't have people driving off into the ditch? Which should be a big liability concern with our town, which can be resolved by barriers or whatever.
Yeah.
The plans already provide for temporary, temporary traffic barricades until such time as that blue line goes in, at which time, of course, they'd be removed.
Which brings us back to the blue line, Mayor, thank you.
One thing, just to make sure, the agenda item is are we willing to pay for the blue line, not the decommissioning of Nance Road? We can have that discussion down the road.
That's correct.
Absolutely, okay.
And the yellow line is already, you already have an agreement in place, so we're only talking blue line.
Okay, so I call for a motion. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve, Mayor.
Motion made by Mr. Finch to approve a development agreement with the TF Stony Creek LP to provide for funding and construction of a four, of a portion of a roadway connecting Hounsell Lane and Nance Road. Is there a second?
Mayor, I'll second.
Second by Mr. Allen, and to approve the agreement. Everyone heard the motion. Are there additional discussions? All in favor of the motion signify? All opposed, motion passed 7-0. Thank you, Ryan. Moving on to the last item on the agenda, that's the mayor and council request for future staff updates and agenda items.
And you do have your project matrix updated on your desks?
Yes.
And I also emailed you an electronic copy today.
Thank you, Ms. Catherine, this is great, appreciate you. Okay, if there are no council requests. Now, time is 8:47. I'm going to adjourn the regular town council meeting of Town of Sunnyvale for May 13th. Thank you and good night.